Hello?
Can you hear us? Hello? Hello, Chief Boone? Well, if she can, she's not.
Hello?
Shandra?
Hi, yeah.
Okay, so you can't hear us.
Yeah.
Okey dokey. Just checking, I keep thinking about that meeting when you and I were having conversation with each other. Nobody can hear.
Grace is here remotely also.
All right, good evening. It is 7:00 P.M. I'd like to start the meeting, the committee of the whole. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Ms. Colicetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry? Mayor Marlin?
Present.
First item on the agenda is approval of minutes of previous meetings for September 30th, 2024, the city council minutes. Are there any technical corrections? May I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Chris. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Are there any additions to the agenda tonight? Mayor Marlin?
Just a couple of updates. One, I want to make sure council and the public knows that the council goal quarterly report was updated in the packet. And the attachment that should have been included with ordinance number 2024-10034 was also added to the packet and sent out this morning. Both of those items were sent out to council this morning.
Any other additions to the agenda? Okay, presentations and public input. Let's start with public input. For those who'd like to address the committee of the whole, please step up to the microphone and provide your name for the record. There's another person coming in. While we let that person come in, I will go ahead and read one item that came to city council. This is an email from a Katie Muir for Urbana Board 7. During tonight's continuing discussion regarding the reallocation of $305,477 in ARPA funds, I would like to ask the city council members to consider allocating a portion of the funds for purposes of creating an intimate partner violence, IPV, task force. To include a representative of each of the four local police jurisdictions, Urbana-Champaign, University of Illinois, Champaign County Sheriff's Office, at least one judge, a representative with the state's attorney's office, an individual with knowledge regarding diversion programs, and several individuals affiliated with area churches who provide couples counseling, with the ultimate goal of community members gaining a better understanding of the fact that intimate partner violence affects all people regardless of their sex, gender, or sexual orientation, and to better understand the distinctions between the subtypes of intimate partner violence, including situational couple violence described as intimate partner violence that is comprised of occasional mutual and lower intensity acts that attempt to deal with conflict rather than exert power and control over the partner through use of fear and intimidation. It has been reported that this type of violence is perpetuated almost equally between men and women. There's some citations. What about men? A critical review of men's experience of intimate partner violence. And there is a reference on here. This will be included in the meeting minutes for those interested. All right, I will allow the public one more opportunity. If the public would like to address the committee of the whole, please do so at the microphone. All right, seeing none. Moving on to staff report, the second and third quarter 2024 update on mayor council strategic goals. Carol?
Thank you. As the mayor said, we managed to get the correct version uploaded today. So apologies for what we learned, something about merging PDFs that have fillable fields. So something good came out of it. So I'm just going to highlight a couple of things and then I'd be happy to try and answer any questions. So under 2-1A, coordinating with our fellow agencies to reduce homelessness, we have been awarded the grant from DCEO for Hope Village. If you remember, we had to come and get council approval to make the application. So that will be brought to council for acceptance on November 18th. That's the plan right now. But that's good news. Then we had under 2-2D, we had efforts to reduce the rental registration inspection backlog and manage, better manage the workload in CD building safety and adding a housing inspector. The, in the, in the updates, it said that they were in the interview process, I called, and two conditional offers are out right now because we were down an inspector and then we added an inspector. So that's the latest on that. And there is not an update like that for ArborTech because they just finished interviews. So, but I expect that they'll be extending an offer in the next few weeks there. For the equal program, which was 3-2A, seven locations for sidewalks have been or are being completed this fall. And then we have six locations for new streetlights that will be completed next spring. That's all part of the first round of equal. Under sustainable infrastructure, the rooftop solar has been installed at 610 Glover, and I guess they're awaiting final inspections on that. And then the geothermal wells have been installed at the two fire station construction sites for those, those buildings. The, under 3-3B, the sustaining Urbana neighborhoods sun grant, you remember that was something that Brayden brought in response to doing the smaller sustainability grants. I just want to say no applications have been received as of today. And so if you know of anybody who's interested in applying, the deadline is November 4th, and they can either look on the city's website or give Brayden a call. And then finally, I'll just note that under 4-4B, implementing the public realm recommendations, which were, as you remember, quicker, cheaper, faster. We had, we just concluded the six evenings of Urbana night market on Thursdays between September 5th and October 10th. And staff was very pleased with the turnout and support for the night market for the first, for the first effort. So they're going to be looking at what they want to do in 2025. So if there's any questions about those items or anything else, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Let's start with the remote people. Shandra and Grace, do you have any questions?
I, I do. The GARE equity tool.
Yeah.
And it said that you identified a consulting organization to help facilitate the development of the plan. Do you think that there will be a finalized plan and/or implementation of said plan before the end of Q1 '25?
I will have to ask Carla about that, but I will find out.
Thank you.
Grace, do you have any questions?
Uh, thank you, yes, I do. Thank you for the updated update. I haven't had as much time to go through them, but I was wondering in particular about 3-2C, about more public notice for zoning ordinance changes, and 3-3D about a bag fee. Just because those two seem like they haven't had much progress or updates this year. And I was just wondering if there was anything else that council or the public can do to help support that process, or if there are any plans for implementing some of those goals.
Um, I, I think it's just a question of, of staff getting to these. You'll notice on 3-2C, one of the things I tried to note is that the priority for planning staff right now is completing the comprehensive plan. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of effort being put into that. We're in kind of a really dynamic period with the plan commission where we, there's, there's a work session, there has been a work session for at least the last four meetings for plan commission. So there's, and then there's follow-up work that needs to be done as a result of that. And then for the, the bag tax, I, I just don't have a, any other update other than we haven't made any progress on it right now. But I don't think there's anything that the council needs to do that would assist at this point.
Thank you.
Chambers and Sharice?
Um, yes. I would like a little bit more information regarding the, the, uh, plot on Bradley and Lincoln where, and this is, this is for, this is on page, I'm not sure, 59, I guess, regarding the.
Grocery?
Grocery, yeah.
Well.
I wasn't able to be here when the meetings went down for the Imagine, reimagine, uh, Imagine Urbana stuff.
So, um, let me see, do, do you have the, the number? It's for something?
It's a 4.3A?
3A, okay. Oh, yes, okay. So I have to give Andrea Rudy in particular a lot of credit for the effort that she has put in on trying to get a grocery store in Ward 3. And so every possible lead that we get, she is pursuing that. So this is, I would say, I feel like, and the mayor, the mayor can give you her, her opinion too. I feel like this is the closest we've ever been to having someone who could potentially open a store. We, the, the Illinois grocery incentive, I think, is very important to getting it done. And as I think we might have said in the past, you, you cannot be a chain. You have to have fewer than five stores to qualify for that. So we've identified a couple of people who have shown some level of interest in exploring a store in Urbana. So that part's good. And then the, the other piece of the question then is, as it relates to the most obvious site, which you identified as Lincoln and Bradley, that site's for sale. And it, so it would have to be coordinated as part of what we would expect to be a larger development. So there's still a lot of work to be done, but this has been a really diligent effort over at least the last three years.
Yeah, I know.
And, and we're as close, I would say we're as close as we've ever been.
Okay, because I kind of got word, you know, because I, I, I was out of town and I, I kind of got word that there was, um, she did a tour and she, you know, gave all this information and I'm real, I really do give Andrea a lot of credit. She's, I know she's been working on it, she and I have, have had several discussions. So I, I know she's, but this, I just wanted to get an update on how close we might be to actually making this happen.
I think, just, so, mayor, just one, one more thing. If it's going to happen, it's still going to take at least a couple of years, but this is the kind of effort that it takes. It's sustained over a long period of time and you just have to work and work and work. And, and I, and I do need to give you credit. We wouldn't be working on it if you hadn't brought this up the first, for the first set of mayor council strategic goals. So, you know, it's, we're, it's continuing to get energy. And so Diane, I'm sorry.
Diane?
I can't add a whole lot, but I will say I'm more hopeful than I have been because we've actually had contact with people, regional folks, who actually have experience. And that's a big difference between them and some of the people we've talked to in the past. So, so, yeah, I'm hopeful.
Okay. Hopeful is better than, oh, well, I'm sorry.
But, but we get reports every single week during our weekly economic development meeting. That is on the agenda and every single week we get an update on that. So it, it's, it's a constant, continuous, ongoing effort.
Thank you.
Chris?
Um, Carol, is there any timeline updates on developing a procurement policy?
I don't, I don't have a, I don't have a timeline, no.
But it's still in the queue and, yeah.
Everything that is, that is in these action items is in the queue.
Okay.
Other questions?
I've, I've got another if.
Yep, go for it, Shandra.
Um, you, the, the sunshine grant, the so, sunshine, sunny grant?
Sun.
No applica, no applications thus far. Do you think there is anything more that, you know, we could do to encourage applications? Do you think any barriers exist to applying? Just want to sort of help that if we can.
I spoke to Brayden about it this afternoon just to get an update. And he said, you know, he's been spreading the, the word through our, through our networks. And, and I think he purposely, knowing that these were small grants and they might be people applying who had not applied for a grant in the past because individuals can apply, he purposely kept the application process simple and he is making himself available to talk to anybody. So I think the best thing that any of the council members can do right now is just to promote the prob, the, the program.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Carol, the only question I had is, can you provide a, a list, an updated list of the equal projects and where they're located?
Yes.
All right. If there's no further questions, we'll move on. Thank you for the, oh, Diane?
Couple of updates. One is that I wanted to let people know that this coming Saturday, the Black Mental Health and Wellness Conference is scheduled at Parkland College from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. It's free, but registration is requested. This is sponsored by the Community Coalition. It's under the leadership of Donna Tanner-Herald. There was one held last year, it was extremely well attended and very well received. So they're doing it again. And Urbana, City of Urbana is a sponsor of this conference. So, so people can come for part of the day, all of the day. Again, it's completely free, but registration is requested so they know how much food to plan for. And you can go to the Community Coalition at the City of Champaign website and the information is there. And secondly, I wanted, I have a brief update on where we are with the Alternative Response Task Force. City staff and the Barry Dunn consultants held a Zoom meeting with, on Friday, this past Friday, for about an hour, to discuss the proposed contract amendment and the specific meeting procedures for the Alternative Response Task Force as that's been set forth in the resolution that was passed by the city council. This is extremely high priority for all of us at the city. At this point, the discussion is now between the attorneys for both parties. And as soon as we have information to share about the direction we go from here, we'll do so. They expect to be meeting, I believe, mid-week, from what I, what I understand. The two previously scheduled task force meetings have been canceled, as you know, and no new meetings have been scheduled until the issues are resolved. And that's where things stand at this point. And again, as soon as we have information to share, we will do so.
All right, moving on. We have new business, resolution number 2024, 2024-10071R, a resolution approving an increase in the number of liquor licenses in the Class P designation for MP Liquor Incorporated. Doing business as MP Liquor, sorry, MP Food and Liquor at 1720 Philo Road, Suite A, Urbana, Illinois. Executive?
Yes, this is an application by MP Liquor Incorporated, doing business as MP Food and Liquor. They're asking for a class, they have applied for a Class P Package Retailers Off-Premise Consumption Liquor License and the, uh, location is 1720 Philo Road, Suite A in Urbana. Just as a reminder, Class P liquor license permits the licensee to sell at retail any and all alcoholic liquor in the original package form and it's off-premise consumption only. And city council is asked to approve the Class P liquor license for this entity.
Questions? Sharice?
This is a liquor store?
It's a liquor store.
Okay. Just make it, yeah. And this is on Philo Road?
Correct.
Where's this, where's this exactly, can you give me a landmark?
It's on the east side of Philo Road, near the Burger King. There's a strip mall there with four, I think it's four different suites, and this is the suite on the northernmost end. And again, just as a reminder, we bring each liquor license application. If the applicant has completed the paperwork required, it's brought to city council for your consideration. And that was a, at the request, it's been in place now for several years. Council wanted an opportunity to weigh in on the applications.
Is that Grace's ward?
That would be Ward, current Ward 6.
That's my thought. Grace, since this is in your ward, do you have any questions?
Not questions, I do have discussion.
Okay. If there aren't any other questions, I'll take a motion. All right, if there's no motion, then this dies. All right. Okay, moving on. Ordinance number 2024-10033, an ordinance fixing the salary of the city clerk elected for definite term of office from 2025 to 2029. I'm going to ask, we talk and, and hear about both of these ordinances together. So that's the first one. The second ordinance is number 2024-10034, an ordinance fixing the salaries of city officials who are elected for a definit, definitive term of office from 2025 to 2029. Shandra, you sponsored the first one. Would you like to say anything?
Yeah, um, I sponsored it in, because I spoke with Darcy about, um, basically the city clerk salary and the differential between the deputy city clerk and the city clerk and, and all that stuff. But I will let Darcy give the, the specific details.
All right, Darcy, you have the floor.
Thank you. So every four years, at least 180 days ahead of the start of the next term, this council has the opportunity to set the salary for all elected officials, the city clerk, the mayor, and all aldermen. And that salary is to be fixed for the entire duration of the term. So that means that there is no ability to change it during a term. This year, I did meet with the mayor and Carol and we had some preliminary discussions about values. I would like to speak about the data behind the values in my proposal. There were two salary studies conducted by professional clerk organizations that I'm a part of. The first being the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. They conducted an international salary study of their membership via a survey. That is linked in the memo. You have to click into the Excel file for the state of Illinois to see Illinois' values. I do have a pared down version that highlights municipalities with populations between 30,000 and 60,000, which is the second figure on page 79 for item F2 of your packet. The other salary study was conducted by the Central Illinois Municipal Clerks Organization, compiled by Kelly Benowitz, who is the municipal clerk from Galesburg, Illinois. Counselor received the full Excel file that has all of the data from that one, but I have also provided a pared down, a pared down version of that chart as well in the packet on the same page as the other salary study. So the Galesburg Clerks Survey is the top one and you see that is dated June 27th, 2024. And then the lower one is, of course, 2023. These do differ slightly because one, the IIMC one provides salary range, whereas the Simcoe one provides an actual dollar figure. But I felt that displaying the data in this way was significant because it also details if these clerks are full-time or part-time. In the city of Urbana, your clerk is a full-time elected clerk. And the duties vary greatly between part-time and full-time clerks. And that is reflected in turn in the salary. So it's important that we are talking apples to apples instead of apples to oranges. The other point that I wish to bring up that is reflected in my proposed values for the municipal clerk salary for this next term. In 2021, the city of Urbana contracted with Evergreen Consulting Co. to perform a complete compensation and job classification study for the city's non-bargaining unit employees. And that study did include the deputy city clerk. The duties of the deputy city clerk are similar to the clerk. The clerk also has additional duties as the department head. But the deputy city clerk role received one of the greatest increases citywide of the non-bargaining unit employees because of the disparity in the pay for the scope of work that is done. In fact, when I was the deputy, I did receive a $10,000 increase in one year because of the findings of this study. So also in your packet is the city policy that includes the pay grades and job classifications. And the deputy city clerk is a pay grade 107, which is highlighted in there. And that provides, based on Evergreen Consulting's analysis, a minimum compensation sufficient for those job duties, a midpoint and a ceiling. And you will find that the values that I presented end up at the midpoint for the range. Because the salaries of elected officials are fixed, following this compensation and class study, it did result in pay compression within the department. The current deputy city clerk salary is 98% of the current city clerk salary. And while elected officials and their compensation is entirely different than that of other staff because it is beholden to ordinance and their duties are different, I do think it is important to at least examine the city policies in regards to pay compression and what they recommend within departments. Because the city clerk's department is only two people and the work is the same. We are doing the same work and this is what the work has been assessed as to what it should be compensated for. Thank you.
Questions? Shandra and Grace, do you have questions?
I had a question. I was wondering what percentage that would now put the clerk and deputy clerk salaries? Like more between that 90 to 98% of each other, or where would that put it with your proposed model?
With the current model, it would take it from 98 to, I believe, 86%, which is in compliance with the city policy of no greater than 90%.
Nobody else has questions, I have questions. Is there a, you had mentioned that this is a full-time position. You know, one thing, and I've already talked to you a little bit about this, is that, you know, these positions, while we expect people to get the job done and we expect it to be a full-time position, to the best of my knowledge, there is nothing written that says it is a full-time position. Can you confirm that?
So there is nothing written that defines it as part-time? And in fact, it is an action of the electorate via referendum to make a full-time clerk a part-time clerk. So in the city of Urbana, you have full-time elected officials because no referendum has been taken to reduce it to part-time. Because the duties of part-time clerks are solely keepers of the seal. They attend the meetings and keep the minutes, but all they do is affix the seal. They do not have office hours, they are not full-time employees, they're not entitled to benefits.
So when you say that it's part of the electorate, if you provide an email just for us to be able to look at what the electorate says?
The electorate is in the voters.
Yeah, no, I understand, but I guess my question is, is there anything? I know that there, for example, is requirements in order to be a city clerk, right? There's different certifications that you have to have and so forth. Is there anything that does for the city of Urbana and the time commitment?
So in the city code, there are prescribed duties for the city clerk. There are also statutory duties that are defined in the Illinois Compiled Statutes that explain the duties of the city clerk's office. But to your point, it is not stated in city code or in the charter of this city that it is a part-time position. And there has not been a vote cast via a referendum turning it into part-time. So inherently, it is still full-time.
So does that mean that the default in the state statute is that it's a full-time position?
Unless otherwise stated.
That's the default?
Yes.
Okay. Other questions? Charisse?
Yes. Darcy, just out of curiosity, can you educate me, at least, on a lot of the duties that you do? I know that you're the keeper of the seal, the city seal. I know in the past, our city clerk has also been a FOIA officer. Tell me what else your duties entail.
Sure. So while the FOIA officer is now a staff member of the legal department, we are still the face-to-face public office for constituents who are either picking up paper copies or who are completing a FOIA request form. So we explain the FOIA process to them, we navigate that process with them, and also start the FOIA process by forwarding all paper requests that are received by the city of Urbana to the FOIA officer. The city clerk's office oversees all mail operations for the entire city. That is a daily duty. We are the keepers of the record, but that means we keep all city contracts, all ordinances and resolutions. We keep all of the minutes for all of the city council and committee of the whole meetings. We are also the OMA designee, well, I am the OMA designee for the city. So that means all agendas for every single board and commission come through my office to be published so that I can ensure that they are published in conformance with the Open Meetings Act. That ties into something that I call internal and external customer service. So I would say a large portion of my internal customer service is Open Meetings Act support. I am regularly fielding phone calls from staff members and other departments about how to format their agendas, their packets, how to administer their meetings. I am also the parliamentarian for the city council, which is when I offer you guys advice or options on how to get to what you want to do within meeting protocols. I did detail some of the duties of the Urbana City Clerk's Office in my memo on Page 75, so the second page of my memo details in that first paragraph more of the duties that the clerk's office does. Oh, we issue raffle and domestic partnership licenses as well.
Chris?
Darcy, do you also upload the minutes, agendas, and films on the website?
We don't upload the videos. That is our lovely staff at Urbana Public Television that does that for all of our boards and commissions. But we do upload the agendas, the packets, and the minutes for all your city council meetings. Well, not for the other boards and commissions. That is actually done via staff members on the website. But in terms of the paper publication and ensuring they're in compliance with the Open Meetings Act, that is done by the clerk's office.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Can you clarify, am I remembering correctly that as it is currently, it's very likely that someone going from deputy to clerk could take a pay cut in order to be able to hold that position?
That is accurate, yeah.
Thank you.
So Darcy, one of the things, and I haven't spent a ton of time like you have, but I did notice that the city clerks across the state of Illinois vary in terms of whether or not they're elected, whether or not they're appointed, whether or not they're classified as full-time, part-time. Are there specific duties by statute in terms of exactly what the city clerk has to do?
Yes. In the Illinois Compiled Statutes, there is actually an entire section regarding duties of officers, and the clerk is one of those.
Okay, so that's, that would be great if you could send us.
Sure.
That would be helpful. And then, is there any requirement of hours? I know that you guys are here in the evenings, how does that work?
I maintain full office hours. I would say an average week for me is 50 to 55 hours with the council meetings because it is the standard eight to five. The city clerk's office is open eight to five, Monday through Friday.
And then, and Mayor, please chime in. So in regards to elected officials, I believe that each elected official has the option of joining the retirement program and the health care program, but...
If they qualify.
If they qualify, they do have the option, but they're not mandated.
Yes. But you have to meet the years, the number of years in the system requirement.
In order to be vested and to pull from retirement.
Correct. And elected officials also have the option of participating in the health insurance plan.
Okay, and do employees only have options or are they mandated?
For which?
Both.
They can elect not to participate in the health insurance plan if they have other options.
And retirement?
I don't know.
Okay.
Hard to know why you wouldn't, though, if you're eligible.
So Darcy, the comps, the shortened one that you gave us, are those all elected positions? And are they all full-time, i.e. there's no referendum to make them half-time?
So it indicates on the chart if their time, if they are part-time or full-time. And I know for a fact that IMC one does also indicate in the full chart, which is linked both in the memo but also linked in the supplementary council email, it does have a section that indicates if they are elected or appointed.
But the shortened version that you gave us, is that one, is that all elected officials?
It is not. I focused exclusively on municipalities of comparable size, in terms of population.
The population size. Okay. All right, any other questions? All right, Mayor, would you like to?
I have two questions.
Sorry, Grace. Go for it.
I, thank you. First one was, I was wondering about the current salaries. I don't know if I'm missing this in the memo or if that could be provided.
It is.
Like the table I see starting May 2025.
Oh, yeah, so are you asking about the proposed salary or the current salary?
The current salaries for mayor, clerk, older person.
Yes, so in my memo, under Previous Council Actions, I did link Ordinance Number 2020-10-054, but I do also have a printed copy of that. Which salary are you interested in for the present? Which office, rather?
Sorry, sorry. Yeah, that was helpful, thank you for the link, yeah. I think I've found it, yeah, and just for anyone else. So I'm looking at May 2024 to April 2025. Mayor at 73 something, clerk at 63 something, and older person, we've kept at 7,000. Thank you. And then my second question was, just out of general kind of structural things about how the city works, is what is like a system of accountability for the role of clerk? Like, I understand that you're beholden to Open Meetings Act and a whole bunch of other laws, but is there any kind of oversight, overseeing board or body, or is it just up to court? I guess I'm just wondering with all of the responsibility on the court, just hypothetically, what is like a system of accountability to ensure that not you, but someone is doing all the things that need to be done?
Sure, so the clerk is an elected official, the same as all the aldermen and the mayor. So we are always beholden to the electorate, the citizens of the city of Urbana, but we are also beholden to the Public Access Commission or Councilor, the PAC, which is the overseeing body who handles concerns from citizens regarding violations of the Open Meetings Act. We are also beholden to FOIA, so if there are records that anybody specifically wants out of the clerk's office, we are bound by FOIA, as all governmental entities are. But yeah, it's no different than the mayor in that regard as an elected.
Thank you.
Diane? Would you like to speak to your ordinance?
Yes, I would like to just respond to Grace's question about salaries. On the chart that you were sent by email today, and that was added to the PAC, it's titled Comparable City Data Versus Urbana Elected Salaries. At the bottom there, it gives historic information on salaries for Urbana mayor, city clerk, and older persons from 2013 through the current year. So you've got the current salaries there on that chart as well. And it shows the historical progression. I'm going to speak to the second ordinance listed on the agenda, which is the proposal to fix the salaries for mayor, city clerk, and city council members. I want to start out by, once again, we're in a situation where the word unprecedented applies. We've been using that way too much in the last four years, but we're finding, you know, I'm finding myself in this position again because normally, we don't have two, basically, competing proposals or ordinances for salaries put before council. Typically, it comes through our office, and you have one ordinance to consider. So this makes it more complicated. As Darcy mentioned, we did sit down last week, we met with Darcy. We just have different approaches and philosophies as far as the application of the Class and Comp Study to elected positions and the use of salary compression as a guide. And that's our biggest difference of opinion. So I'll go through, I'll go through that. And again, I apologize, I regret that your job has been made more complicated, but I believe it's important that we have a discussion about both approaches. You have the chart of current comparable city data. The chart provides examples of salaries set by ordinance, and these all have to be set by ordinance once every four years, currently in effect in various jurisdictions. Everybody currently is setting salaries, so what you have in that chart or what's currently in effect, it very likely will change going forward. You can, no matter what chart you're looking at and who provides it, you'll see that salaries for elected officials vary widely across jurisdictions due to differences in population, the form of government in place, the roles, specific duties of officials, financial capacity of the jurisdiction, and other factors. Some mayor's roles are more ceremonial in nature, especially if they're a mayor or council, or city manager form of government. Others have responsibility in conjunction with staff in managing city services, which is what we have here in Urbana. For many, the presence of a city administrator or city manager impacts the mayor's duties and time commitments. In Urbana, the mayor also serves as the local liquor control commissioner, which certain times of the month, it takes a very large amount of time. And that's true for city clerks as well. Some clerks have roles, other roles in addition to the duties that are related to maintaining official city records, the seal, meeting management, and municipal elections. In other cities, clerks do serve as the main FOIA officer. That was the case here for a few years. The FOIA officer, there was a FOIA officer, the city clerk was the main FOIA officer in the city in addition to the one in handling FOIs in the police department. He resigned suddenly, and the duties of FOIA officer for the city was, and one position from the clerk's office was moved to exec. So the FOIA officer currently is in the legal department. It's worked out very well since then, and we're currently sitting at about eight, as of today, 874 FOIA requests have been processed to date in the city. They come, some of them come in paper-wise through the clerk's office. Most of them come in online or through the portal on the website. They all get processed and managed by the FOIA officer in the legal department. In Urbana, the mayor and city clerk are independent elected officials, and they are not, and I say "they," I'm trying, I want to separate the position from the people because all of us are temporary occupants of these positions. And that's sometimes hard to do, but it's something important to do. They're not regular city employees. They're not covered by civil service position descriptions or policies, and that's a big deal in the city of Urbana. If you're a non-bargaining employee, you don't have the protection of a union, but we have civil service. They set, they literally can set their working hours and the hours of their office. That's true, that's true of the mayor, that's true of the clerk. They don't have specified sick leave, vacation leave, or paid holidays. That's up to the individual elected official. As noted, we can, they can participate in the city's health insurance plan, and they may qualify for the IMRF pensions. One important distinction is they don't have annual evaluations. One part of the Class and Comp Study that was done also involved, there was a huge multi-year effort for Class and Comp to look at every single position in the city, make sure that the pay ranges made sense for the duties that people had. And it also, we also, at the same time, implemented a merit-based or an evaluation-based system for merit increases. Before then, people would get raises based on longevity. That wasn't fair to anybody. So we went to a merit-based system. But that included now annual evaluations that every single regular employee of the city undergoes, including the deputy clerk. Elected officials don't. We get evaluated every four years at the ballot box. Well, probably every day we get evaluated, officially every four years at the ballot box. So that's a very important distinction. The Class and Comp Study did not include any elected officials for the reasons that I just mentioned, plus many, many more. We're simply very different in many ways from regular city employees. And that's why it was troubling to me when applying one aspect of Class and Comp, the pay compression, it doesn't take into account completely different standards under which elected officials operate in this city, and frankly, all over. I mean, we're seeing that playing out around the county now. We've seen it currently, we've seen it in years past. Elected officials have a great deal of flexibility, and the accountability that they have mainly is at the ballot box every four years when they're up for election. And we just had a fundamental difference of opinion about using pay compression, Class and Comp, as the basis for setting salaries. Traditionally in Urbana, and if you look at the history of salaries for elected officials in Urbana, they've been modest. We've always prioritized regular city employee salaries. They're the ones who do the work and maintain the continuity from one term to the next, one year to the next. And that's, that has been the tradition. It's also reflected city budget for, you know, four years ago, we were able to, I believe council provided a 1% increase, and they took no increase for their own salaries. This year, I was recommending a 2.5% per year for years one through four of the upcoming term because the city, number one, can afford that, and number two, it reflects, we need to increase the salaries a bit. I do want to point out, though, that that 2% a year annual increase for years one through four represents a total of 10.4% over the four-year period. four represents a total of 10.4% over the four-year period. It wasn't as clear from the chart in the clerk's memo. And I wanted to point out that the clerk's proposal in front of you includes an 11.8% salary increase in year one, followed by a 3% increase in years two, for two, three, and four. That's a total increase of 22.2% over the four-year period. And that's just, that's what those numbers represent, and just important for people to know what you're looking at when you consider. But again, this was a fundamental difference in use of pay compression as a guide. And that's where we stand. And I apologize that there are two conflicting proposals before you. And again, it's unprecedented, so none of us have any experience navigating through this. But we have gotten through things before, and we'll get through this. So it's, again, city council's responsibility and opportunity to set these salaries for the next four years.
Grace and Chandra, do you have any questions for Diane?
I just wanted to, I don't know if I missed it, but you said 800 something FOI years. What was the timeframe on that? I'm curious.
One year to date this year.
Okay, thank you. And then also.
Those all, again, those all come through and are processed, managed, quarterbacked by the FOIA officer.
Right. So since these two ordinances are conflicting, as you say, what happens, I guess if one is, I don't know, if one is approved and the other is not, or I guess, what's the order in which we would take it? I guess we would have to do the city clerk one first, and then if that passes, then substitute in into the second ordinance? How would that work?
So as chair, I guess I have the flexibility to make a suggestion here. But of course, council can weigh in here. We can do this one of two ways. We can discuss the first ordinance, as you mentioned. And then based on whatever the final result of that one is, we can look at the second ordinance and then make any adjustments as needed. Or we could work from the second ordinance first and make any adjustments taking into consideration the other ordinance. Is there a preference?
What is the date that this, that both of these ordinances need to be?
I believe the date is November 2nd.
So we only have a couple of weeks to get this done anyway.
Yeah, I actually, Chandra, I agree with you. I think the easiest way to do this is to talk about the first ordinance and then talk about the second ordinance, unless the lawyer has other recommendations.
Well, we've already brought up the second.
We had a staff report, basically, on both of them, but.
Okay.
I still have a question.
Oh, just one second, Grace. Matt's getting ready to say something.
Yeah, I'm sorry, can you repeat the part that was.
Well, we're trying to figure out exactly how to handle two ordinances that cover the same thing. So the two options are just work with the second one, taking into consideration what's in the first one, to make any adjustments as the council deems, or to take the first one and then make adjustments to the second one.
To me, the alternative where you discuss the first one, and then depending on the outcome of that, you could make a floor amendment to the second ordinance to incorporate whatever action is taken on the first one if they're inconsistent with each other.
Okay, all right. Grace?
Thank you. My question was for Diane, and I'm sorry if I missed it. You were talking about you didn't think the clerk's salary should be based on the city assessment of other employees. And I was wondering what your assessment is based on? Is that a straight percentage, or are you basing yours on something else?
It's the percentage. Straight percentage increase.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we move on? Grace?
Do, are the salaries for the elected officials, do they ever take into consideration some type of cost of living increase? Is that what that 1% is supposed to be? Or?
Yeah, the only mechanism for change is what you set 180 days ahead of the start of the term, and it's locked in for four years. So regardless of what cost of living does, the salaries are fixed for four years.
So there's, when we take into consideration what the new salaries will be for the next four years, what are we, we're just basing it on a percentage that is given, that is given? What I'm saying is that her position will forever be behind salary-wise, the compensation that she, that one may need, or that one may deserve, considering her responsibilities or that office, let me put it that way, that office will always be behind. I mean, city council people.
I would say, I would say no, because technically, if you wanted to give the mayor $150,000 for the next four years, we, if people agreed, that could be done. Mayor?
If the mayor wanted to come and ask for it.
If you wanted to apply salary compression to the mayor's office, it would be over $200,000. So, and I'm not proposing that at all. But that's the same principle applied.
I'm also just going to interject that the clerk is functionally different as an elected official than the mayor, and that it is supervising one staff member. And the duties are the same. It's not supervising every single department of the city. The duties of the department are very specific and narrow. And we have provided scopes of work that have been assessed at certain values. It is not equitable to compare it to the mayor when considering city policy.
Jaya?
Yeah, thank you. So there's a lot of information, I keep trying to switch back and forth. I'm looking at, you know, the duties and, sorry, I'm trying to form a question. Am I right in assuming for a lot of cities or towns that unless it's specified, that it's a part-time position, the duties are going to be pretty similar?
Yes.
Okay. Because I'm looking at the chart you provided, but I'm also looking at, you know, the chart that was provided related to multiple positions in, you know, Champagne 90K, Danville 90K, Evergreen Park, which is a smaller population, 80K. If I'm reading this correctly, too, it also, I want to make sure I'm understanding this chart that came with the mayor's recommendation, that it looks like the city clerk's compensation has not increased at the same rate as the other positions. So in, back in 2013, there was about a $7,000 difference between the mayor and the clerk, and now it's closer to 10. Am I reading that correctly?
That is correct. In fact, this last four years, the clerk's salary increased less than 1% at 0.96%.
All right, any other technical questions? All right, so the order of operations here. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Chandra.
I was gonna make a motion if there was no other questions.
I don't see any here in chambers, go for it.
I would suggest, like you said, starting out with the first ordinance, ordinance number 2024-10-033, I move that for approval, an ordinance fixing the salary of the city clerk elected for a definite term of office, 2025 to 2029.
Second.
All right, I'm going to give that to Jaya. So that is moved by Chandra and seconded by Jaya. Discussion. Jaya?
Yeah, thanks. So I appreciate all this information, and I understand the piece about not just looking at the compression issue, but I also think that there's a lot of information here that, quite frankly, I don't think that we're paying our clerk appropriately. I think there's an argument for us to think about how some of these other positions compare, but we can talk about that more with the second ordinance. I think one of the things that worries me about our city is that we're asking people to do incredibly difficult work, but not necessarily factoring in, the economy is totally different than it was even a few years ago, right? So thinking about how do we try to recruit and retain not just for positions that people are applying for, but also for our elected positions? And, you know, something like a city council position, that's nowhere near a full-time job. I think that having that standard of, this is more of a gesture to thank people for their time, for their, you know, taking the time to support their community, right? I think that's a little bit different. But what concerns me when we're looking at positions that require very specific expertise is that we don't want to lose those folks, right? If someone's going to take all the time and effort to learn how to do this job, that we don't want to be asking people to take a cut in order to stay. And I think we've had that conversation about positions that we hire for, and I think that's important. And again, they are, they are different. But if we're going to try to encourage that important civic role in our city, I think it's important that we're also thinking about how to give people with that level of expertise, at least something that's somewhere on par with a comparable position that might exist in the community. Otherwise, there's no real incentive for someone to say, well, you know, I have this skill set, I'm going to apply it elsewhere. So I think that our current clerk has provided not only local data, but data from statewide and other officials that show that this would be more competitive. I personally still think there's a question of if it's too low, but I feel like this is appropriate for the data that we have in front of us and what still feels fiscally responsible. So I will be supporting this ordinance.
Grace?
I just kind of want to piggyback on what Jaya said because the, there are specific certifications and so on and so forth for being a city clerk, and that's not cheap. You have to go to classes, professional development, seminars, so on and so forth. And yes, if one is a good city clerk four years later, and if they want to be city clerk for another four years, they will be elected in with a minimal amount of money to even take care of some of that. And I know that the city probably pays for a lot of those particular professional development or seminar types of issues. But I can't help thinking also, something that Jaya said about, you know, being a council person. When my father was on city council, I think he got paid per meeting like $20. Okay? Things change. And obviously, things change because we don't do that anymore, you know? When, years ago, the, being a mayor, you got paid a minimum amount, and you had to have a full-time job. Champagne still does that. So I don't know what their alder, alderpeople do, but I don't know how, if they are compensated or how they are compensated. But what I do know is that the, you know, as well as the role of being an elected official as mayor or a city council person has also changed, and we now have hopefully more equity with certain things, we have to take in consideration the same thing with the city clerk and that particular office. I think that that office keeps a checks and balance type of thing in place between the city and its citizens. And I think that the more that they, that office and the people that run for it have to know, it's not something that you can just step into when you get elected. It's something you have to be trained to do on some level. We were fortunate to have Phyllis Clark train Darcy. And we had been fortunate that when Charlie Smythe was our clerk, he had some knowledge of that. And he trained another person who ended up going to Savoy and being their clerk. It is, it is not something that is taken lightly by any village, township, or city, municipality. So I think that it is imperative that when we think of how that torch gets passed, that we want that torch to be passed to a person who actually wants to do that job. So.
Anyone else have any discussion? Chris, will you take the chair?
I'll take the chair and recognize Mary Alice.
Thank you.
So I've given quite a bit of thought to this item, and here's, I'll just expand upon a couple of things. I know that at another meeting for another body, we had a conversation about one individual who's getting paid significantly more than the elected official. And multiple times, people told me elected officials do not get paid as much. I disagreed with that. I thought that the differential between the two was pretty significant. So I think that there's, one big thing that I've been thinking about is accountability. So Grace, thank you for bringing that up earlier. And what I mean by that is, is we know, right? We know that there have been people who have been elected who have not done the job to the, what needed to be done. And so really, the only accountability that this position has is every four years, people would have an opportunity to say, no, we don't support you. While an employee, if they don't do their job, they get let go. I don't think we have any mechanism to really hold that accountability. So I'm trying to weigh these things as we think about what is appropriate. I think that the ranges, by the way, I kicked out all the Chicago and all the suburbs for the mayor, the council, the clerk, because it's just a totally different living situation there. So as I looked at that, there is a big range, and there goes all the way up to 90 and all the way down to 50. I mean, there's definitely a big range for that. So those are the things that I'm trying to balance. But I will say, which is why I was struggling with whether or not we should look at ordinance one or two first, is I would like to see the same percentage increase between all these elected positions, whether that's two, 2.5, one, three, whatever that is, I would like that to be consistent. So, you know, I think, I think 2.5 in the second ordinance is appropriate. So those are my thoughts. We have a motion on the floor. Is there any more, sorry? Can I?
I'll give the chair back to Mary Alice.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Yes, Grace?
Mary Alice, I did, I'm sorry, I didn't pull the unmute trigger fast enough. Thank you. So I, sorry, I can note about your last comment. So I agree with being torn on some things here. For me, it's between a balance of paying people competitively and equitably for their work, and then also balancing that against the cost to taxpayers and the average income in Urbana. And I don't turn my nose up at 60K a year. And I also understand the feeling of looking around at your counterparts doing the same work, making quite a few tens of thousands of dollars a year more than a current position. So I'm balancing those things here. And I did come up with a question, oh, sorry, but about your idea of consistent percentage increase. I'm not personally tied to that. I think that there is room for equity increases if we have a position that has been historically not paid the same. I don't think that we need to hold it to a set consistent percentage increase. And the question that has come up throughout some of these questions and discussions, I think question for Diane probably, you had said that there was room in the budget for the council member increases here. And I was wondering if you're concerned with the clerk increases was a budget issue or kind of more of an issue on principle? Because it seems like the proposed increases for council members, when you do times seven, is close, if not quite a bit more than what's the proposal for the clerk's salary. So I was wondering if your issue is budgetary or more on principle here?
It's both.
Thank you.
All right, any other?
Which, I, sorry.
Go ahead, Grace.
Sorry, I was going to say, if I have the floor, I think it's hard to separate some of these issues because I think they are somewhat related when you look at the entire budget. when you look at the entire budget. So, I will just say that I'm also torn with the councilperson pay. I could see either way, I could see keeping it a flat 7K. And I think that that is reasonable for the amount of work that's put in, at least from my typical going salary, which maybe isn't enough, but I think it's reasonable. I also think that the proposal is somewhat modest and small in the comparison to the whole city budget. But again, when you do times seven, I would be in more favor of increasing the clerk salary than the older persons, especially when you add that up. I think that there is maybe some kind of room for compromise here if we're talking about just on a budgetary level.
All right. Great, Aja?
Yeah, thanks. So, I, I think I, I get the incentive or the, the reasoning behind a flat percentage raise rate. I think what makes me uncomfortable with that is that we haven't seen the clerk's compensation grow in the way that some of these other positions have. So, to me, you know, kind of going back to Grace's point about an equity issue, I don't think we're, personally, I don't think we're in a place to just do a flat rate. So, like I said, I think that there is enough data to draw from to suggest that the, the proposal in front of us is appropriate. So, I just wanted to restate that.
All right, I'm going to close discussion. And the motion on the table is to move this forward to city council with a recommendation for approval. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Chandra? No, that was Grace.
Aye.
All right, that motion moves forward. Let's go on to the second ordinance. I will go ahead and reread that. Ordinance number 2024-10034, an ordinance fixing the salaries of city officials who are elected for a definite term of office from 2025 to 2029. We've already had a presentation on this. May I have a motion so that we can discuss it?
I move to forward ordinance number 2024-10-034, ordinance fixing the salaries of city officials who are elected for a definite term of office, 25, 2025 to 2029, to city council for approval with the amended costs regarding, amended dollar amounts regarding the city clerk.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Moved by Sharice and seconded, whoop, seconded by Jaya. Discussion. Chris?
I'd like to motion that the alderpeople be divided from the question.
Is there a second?
I'll take it.
Oh, you don't need a second? Okay.
I need a second.
That, that was my fault. I'm sorry, Grace. So, let, it, it's been divided. Let's move forward with the mayor as the only one left then. Any discussion on the mayor's salary? Jaya?
Yeah, thanks. So, I kind of alluded to this in the last discussion. I, I get these numbers. I think, you know, again, there's a lot of information. I appreciate for both of the ordinances that there's been a lot of information provided. And we do need to be careful in terms of thinking about how, how much we're asking from taxpayers. I also think we need to think about, you know, this is a full-time position. And if we were actually thinking about something that was comparable outside of government, where compensation is these days, this is still pretty low. And I'm not necessarily saying that we, we have to change things, but I think it's important to say that. Because I think often, we're expecting people to be retired, to have additional dispense, exposed, expendable income, maybe more discretion to be able to take a position like this. And that's not to say that this is not appropriate compensation. I want to make that clear, too. There are many, many residents in our community who are making much, much less than this, right? We have very, like, a huge proportion of our population is not making a living, much less surviving, wage. But I also think that we need to think about what we're asking people to take on. And if we're asking people who might otherwise be willing to run for this office to take a pay cut, I think that's something that's worth noting, that that could be concerning. And we might be edging qualified or really strong candidates out by, by keeping that compensation more at that kind of, oh, well, we want to be thoughtful about what we're taking from taxpayers. I don't think that's a bad approach by any means, but I do think it's also worth noting that wages have significantly changed over these last few years. And I don't think that we, as a city, are keeping up. Again, that's a decision in terms of, of where we want to put our priorities. I'm not saying that, that's necessarily even a bad decision. But I do think that we're limiting who can run by, run for office by keeping these, these, these rates lower than something comparable outside of civic, city governance.
Other discussion? Sharice?
I think since the, since we're not talking about the alderpeople, and we're only talking about the mayor, mayoral compensation, I, one thing I want to actually add on to what Jaya was saying is that being mayor is a 24/7 job. And I do mean, and I have, I can say that I have honestly called Diane at like, this mayor, at midnight, when there was something that happened in my ward that I felt that, and I couldn't get ahold of necessarily a, a city person. And it's like, what do I do? Just, just to get advice, what do I do? And this is something that is, is 24/7. If something pops off, a tornado, a flash flood, or something, first, the first folks people go to is that, that office, the mayor. After they look at, of course, you know, what are the first responders doing and so on and so forth? But we, I agree with, it's not just a nine-to-five position. It is a 24-hour position. And as this mayor has explained as well, there is no set vacation. You have to take your time when you can. There, there, if you get sick, sometimes, and I've known her to come in sick. So, you have to, you have to take your licks. And you got to, it's making that decision on, is, do I have time to actually rest or not? So, I, I think that Jaya is correct when she talks about the compensation because of the fact that this is a 24-hour position that, and it's, we say full-time, but full-time means all the time, even when you're dealing with your own emergencies and your own grief and your own everything else. So, I want to, I want to keep that in mind. I have no problem with this compensation package.
All right, any further discussion? Chandra, do you have any, anything to add?
I just, I generally think all the adjustments are, as everyone has said, is moving us in a direction to keep qualified people as well as elicit more qualified people to run for these positions. Because oftentimes, you know, compensation can be a barrier. I know this, this role as a, as an alderperson isn't a full-time job, but sometimes it is more than we, more hours in a week than maybe we thought it was going to be. And so, I think, you know, the compensation does need to grow with the, the economy as well as, you know, the increasingly complex situations that come into the city. And so, I'm in support of, of the packages that are presented.
All right. If there's no further discussion? All those in?
Sorry, Mary Alice, I have to go.
Yes, Grace?
Thank you. So, I would like some more information, I think, when we're talking about the budget, with what, what would the budget projections look like with these numbers in addition, in addition to some things that we've changed with benefits severance that might be coming up with contracts? Just because I have some concerns on a budgetary standpoint when we look at the big picture here. And I'm still open and torn on the fence about quite a few of these things. I, I hear the point of leaving it to be a competitive equitable salary. And also, I think something people aren't doing necessarily for the money, but also not wanting to have to drastically lower their quality of life for taking a position like this. So, I'm still open to even reducing councilpersons or increasing some others if needed. But I would like some more information when this comes back to council about what would this look like in a budget projection and see if anything needs to be changed or if it is okay as is and what that would look like.
Diane?
As far as the budget projection, the numbers that are, that you set here are what will be in the budget. And the budget will be formulated around them. So, so you have the opportunity to set these salaries, you have the responsibility to set the salaries for the next four years, and they will be included in the upcoming budget. So, I, I, I'm not sure a budget forecast or a budget projection would, would have an impact on these salaries. These salaries will have an impact on what is in the budget.
Are these salaries considered part of the reoccurring expenses?
Yeah, that, well, they're, they are part of the overall salary schedule, yeah.
So, they are a part of that?
Yeah, so that's what I'm asking.
fiscal.
Yeah. So, year one, the, if you want to look at the mayor's salary, $74,955, that is the salary that will be set in the upcoming FY '26 budget. The following year, FY '27, will be that next salary. So, so you're setting actual dollar numbers. You're not setting a percent increase. You're, those dollar numbers are fixed and they are what will be in the budget for the next four years. Does that help?
Thank you. If I may clarify, I understand that piece. What I'm asking for is how would these changes in salaries impact the budget projection as far as what would be our percentage of reoccurring expenses versus revenue with these adjusted salaries over these years is what I'm asking for.
That I can't answer at this point in time because that, these salaries would be, the rest of the budget hasn't been put together yet. So, so these, these would go into the overall budget formulation. We will always, in formulating the budget, maintain the 25% minimum reserves that our city determined by, mostly the next mayor that goes into the budget, certainly they'll have an input in that, will, will be part of the package. But, but it's not going to have, it's not going to take us below the 25% minimum. And it will be part of the overall, the budget this year was, you know, like $80 million. So, we're, this is a small part of the overall budget.
Jaya?
I, I think that clarification may have been provided already. I think what's, what I heard Grace asking was, you know, even if we were looking at our current budget, would we still be within that range? Grace, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think, obviously, we can't say for sure what the next mayor and council will do, but even if we were looking at our current, because it's pretty tight this year.
So, I think what both Jaya and Grace are referencing is the percentage of reoccurring, is it 98? Or I can't remember the actual percent, 97.5?
I, I can't remember the actual either, but every time we do a budget amendment, it gets updated.
Right.
And so, what we can do is go back to the last, but Elizabeth isn't here. So, we have to, you know, fend for ourselves on this. We can go back to the last budget amendment and we can see what the differential is in terms of available recurring expense to keep within whatever that number is that is our financial policy and tell you what that is relative to what these changes would be in FY '26. Would that get it?
Yes, that, I think that's exactly what they're, they're asking for.
I think we can do that.
Awesome. All right, any further discussion? Grace and Chandra, before I move on. Okay.
I would, I would speak to that. I mean, that's assuming that the rest of the budget is the same as this year's in FY '26.
Correct.
So, so you're, you're taking FY '26 salaries and putting them into an FY '25 budget and looking at the recurring expenditures? Okay, all right. Get a sense, okay.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that moves on to city council. Now, we divided the question. Chris, would you like to speak to the city council?
Yeah, this, and I understand what we're doing. We are setting the sal, or the pay, compensation for the next city council, not setting the salary for us. We're setting it for the next city council. I understand that. I also know that what I wish for does not exist yet, a mechanism by which it wouldn't be on the council to, to vote for its own pay. And so, I, I wanted to divide the question simply to have the opportunity to say that. And B, I, I don't feel comfortable voting for the alderman's salary. I just don't. I find it to be the ultimate in conflict of interest here. So, that, that's where I'm at with it.
Anybody else like to speak to the proposed increase for the city council members?
I would.
All right, Grace?
I would just say that I, I hear what Chris is saying, and I definitely understand the, some of the conflicting feelings of a current and anyone who may be potentially considering being there in the future, that there's a conflict of interest there, at least by feeling, if not in a logistical ways. And I'm, would just reiterate that I, I appreciate the clarification on what information we can have for council next week as far as where the reoccurring expenses wiggle room within our policy. And if we do need to chip away at some things, alderperson's salary is something that I am open to chipping away at. I think it did make sense the last time around when we kept it at 7,000 flat with the pandemic and all of the stressors that were happening at the time. Again, I'm, I'm torn here and I could go either way. But if we do need to wiggle out any wiggle room in the budget, I think the alderperson pay increases would be where I would want to chip those down.
Chris, will you take the chair?
I will take the chair and recognize Mary Alice.
So, I, I just wanted to reflect a little bit. Last time we had this conversation specifically with the town board. So, on the town board, we did not get paid the first time I was interim. And there was a recommendation by the township supervisor that there was a small amount of money that was paid. And, and the rationale actually resonated with me. I mean, I think it speaks a little bit to what both Jaya and Sharice were talking about in terms of people who would be willing to step up and take these positions. And so, the, the rationale at that time was, is that we want to be able to be open to people who might have other responsibilities, people who need childcare, people who need assistance, elder care. We don't want to put people who are in a, a certain living situation where they're out even more money. And, and so, that really sold me on, on the township. I know that there were several city council members at the time said, "We'll just donate the money back to township." But it was available to, to people if they needed it. And also, I mean, you know, we don't get technical and, you know, we don't get computers and so forth. So, there are out-of-pocket expenses is what I'm trying to say. I understand the, the conflict in terms of, are we voting for our own pay raises? Well, we haven't been elected. And for those of us who may or may not be running for reelection, so technically, we're, we're not voting on our today's pay, and I think everybody realizes that. I think 2.5% is realistic, given the, the different negotiations that we've already done with ASME and with the fire department and the police department. 2.5% is actually lower than all of those employees. So, that's where I'm coming from with this. I will be interested to see the financial percentage of reoccurring costs to maybe think through that again. But I just wanted to share that perspective with everybody. All right, I will take the chair back.
I will give the chair back to Mary Alice.
Thank you. Sharice?
Just to kind of piggyback on what you just said, we, as...
we, as city council people, we're not changing our salary sitting here, those of us sitting here at the dais. We're just... We are hopefully trying to incentivize, on some level, others who would like to run for office. And on some level, kind of like what Mary Alice said, you know, people that... And from what my experience has been, people that run for office are also, on some level, they're giving something up to do that. They're giving something up to serve the people of Urbana. That is time. You don't get time back for anything. And for the past four years that we've been on this council, we have put in a lot of time for the city of Urbana. It is, I think, it would be not right for the next city council that sits because everything that we've done is something we're passing on to the next council. And the next council that is seated and sworn in will have to move on and in some ways try to even one-up what we've... The stuff that we've done on some levels. And that would take more time. And it will take their expertise or lack thereof, you know, short learning curve to understand what it is that they are really doing in service of the city of Urbana. So I don't have a problem voting for the schedule either.
All right. With no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
All right, I need an official. Can you call the roll for me?
Ms. who?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colisetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries and it is on to city council. All right, so that is the new business. The next item up for discussion is going to be a fun one. Increasing cost for U-cycle from Public Works. I assume Tim's going to give us the whole lowdown on this. Oh, we got some more people. Scott? I'm sorry, don't recognize you with your mask on. What's your name? Courtney? Okay, sorry about that. All right, you have the floor whenever you're ready.
Good evening, mayor and council. Tim Cowan, Scott Tess, and Courtney Kwong here to present with you tonight. The purpose of our appearance here is to share with you the implications of recent bidding we received for pricing of recycling collection in the city's U-cycle service. And we want to share with you what the outcome of that was, what the implications are, and get some feedback from you on direction of where you'd like us to proceed. So just to zoom out for a second, I want to share what the U-cycle program does. U-cycle, and that's directed by Courtney Kwong, recycling coordinator, provides curbside and multifamily commodities collection. Commodities here means things that are mass-produced, like soda bottles, you know, those types of recycling services. Provides electronics and household hazardous waste collection. Provides drop-off recycling service for a number of small items, like batteries, which is extremely popular here. And provides public engagement and education. That's important to mention that because some of the dollars we're going to talk about are really just this first bullet point. All we're talking about tonight really is costs associated with this first bullet point and the U-cycle tax that funds all of those activities. So some important dates to keep in mind. First, the multifamily and curbside recycling collection contracts that we're talking about tonight were set to expire at the end of March in 2025. So these are long-term contracts, five-year contracts. So we bid these out many months in advance. So we've already opened bids for service that would start in April of next year. That's a five-year contract. Vendors have to make significant capital investments in equipment and hire labor. So we're way ahead of schedule in order to give vendors appropriate time to make those investments to provide this service. And then, so we opened bids already, and then those bids are guaranteed. The prices that the vendors offer are guaranteed for ninety days. So that's coming up December nineteenth. So bid results. It's important to note that we bid multifamily and curbside collection services as separate contracts, but we solicited those prices at the same time. We received... We had three vendors participate in that bid. We had other vendors that were interested, but ultimately didn't participate. It was... The outcome was very clear on the two different services of who was the... You know, which vendor was the low bid. So there wasn't a, you know, it wasn't a close race for each of those. And separate vendors were low bid on the separate services. This is convenient. Multifamily collection service pricing that we received is forty-seven percent higher this year. Curbside collection services, the bids we received were three hundred and thirty percent higher for the every-week recycling collection that we've practiced for decades. We also solicited pricing for every other week service, and that was a hundred and forty-five percent higher than what we pay now on an annual spend basis. So although this is quite a bit higher, we have experienced... We had a five-year contract, which we then extended for two more years because we felt that we were receiving extremely low pricing for the last five and now six years for the curbside service. We went back and looked at the pricing, the bids that we received six years ago. And of course, we took the low bid six years ago. But the high bid for curbside collection six years ago is higher than the low bid we just received a month, two months ago. And I think there's good evidence that we have received extremely low pricing for curbside service for six years.
Just one more point on that that we had looked at was the 2011 contract. That was the one prior to 2018 was actually twelve percent higher than what our 2018 contract was. So there's a clear discrepancy that, you know, operation costs have not gone down in the last fifteen years, but we have experienced the value, I'll say, over the last... The term of this contract at this point. So that was just another thing that we had looked at where the 2011 pricing was actually less or higher than our 2018 pricing.
Okay. So the existing multifamily contract annual spend is around a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. The low bid, we expect that annual spend to be two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. So as I mentioned, forty-seven percent higher. That's just part of the expenditures in the U-cycle program and the multifamily considerations. And so our estimation to pay those additional costs is a twenty-five percent increase in the multifamily recycling tax. Now, we received these bids, went through the normal procurement process according to our policies. And after receiving those prices and selecting the low bidder, our current multifamily recycling provider had a problem and was not able to continue service. And as they've had several problems, a number of problems in the last year with service, we actually discontinued service with that vendor and moved forward the start date for the low bid vendor in the multifamily recycling service. So we've awarded that bid pursuant to the city's procurement policy. So we're going to focus now on the curbside service.
Before we move on, I have a question.
Sure.
Okay, so you said that it's a forty-five percent increase for the multifamily, but the recycling tax is only going to increase twenty-five percent?
Right. So that's because the total U-cycle program involves curbside recycling, multifamily recycling services, plus other costs. And so this is just one of many costs that goes up. So if the service, you know, the cost goes up forty-seven percent, but it's only part of all the costs.
What percentage is it? Is it fifty percent, seventy-five percent of the cost?
The contract services are about sixty percent currently.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Sure. So turning to curbside recycling collection services, we accepted bids. We have not accepted... We have not moved forward with contracts with any of those services. I should mention, you know, the additional expenditures in the multifamily service, which we just started. We believe we have funds within the current budget to get through the end of the fiscal year with, even with those additional costs. Pivoting to the curbside, though, it's a different story. The increases are higher. And so we wanted to come and talk to city council about those implications before we move forward with signing that contract. So the existing service spend, annual spend, is around a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. The low bid, annual spend of six hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. So what we think the rate impact for the tax to cover that additional expense is about a hundred and ten percent increase. There's also, as we mentioned, we solicited prices for every other week service. And while the total spend is, of course, a lot less because we're collecting half as much, the marginal cost of each collection is actually more. So the vendor has to charge more per collection to keep that additional, you know, half a million dollar, whatever it is to buy a packer truck, piece of equipment around, even if they're not using it half as much. And so that's a... It's a lower overall impact, but a higher marginal cost.
I just... There's an error in this. I thought I saved the most recent version and I didn't. Hundred and ten percent is actually a hundred and sixty-seven percent. And forty-nine percent is actually eighty-one percent. We had a calculation error that we... I thought I corrected at the end of the day today, and I clearly did not.
We got some updated data from finance at the end of the day about the number of payers in each of these tax categories, the multifamily and the curbsides. We're trying to scramble to update our spreadsheets at the end of the day and in the presentation. So the curbside and multifamily, you know, current rates are listed here. What we anticipate the increase would need to be to cover the additional higher costs. And so that's what it is. It's worth mentioning that we did some preliminary internet sleuthing of what other communities, our benchmarking communities, pay for similar services. And it's really all over the place. We saw everything from two dollars and fifty cents a month to twenty-three dollars a month. So you can compare that as a sense of scale to what you see here. It's also not clear without, you know, doing a research project whether, you know, the city that charges two fifty a month is actually charging a hundred percent of the costs or whether they're making up some of the other costs with other, you know, general tax revenue, property tax revenue. That might explain this enormous divergence just within the state of Illinois of what cities are charging for recycling service.
Yeah, just to put a pin in this. So to maintain weekly service, the total monthly fee for curbside would go up to eight sixty-eight per month. And multifamily would go up to four oh five per month. Those numbers are additive. If you wanted to reduce down to every other week, you'd go up that two sixty-five to five ninety per month. Just to make sure it's clear, that's not the new rate. It's that plus the old rate.
So can you go back for a second? Just to be clear, multifamily rate is charged based on the number of units. So while it might seem like it's really cheap, it's actually multiplied by the number of apartments or...
So there's more detail here that's not shown. Multifamily has actually two different rates. There's an apartment rate and there's a dormitory rate. Apartments are charged a, you know, the rate you see three twenty-five per unit. The unit is the apartment, doesn't matter if it has two bedrooms or three. Dormitories are charged per bed, and it's a lower number. But there's a small number and it's... This is the main event.
So I just want to summarize this slide here. So for curbside, if you're not a dorm, for each apartment, it's going to go from three twenty-five to four oh five, is that correct, for each apartment?
So for multifamily?
Yes.
Yeah, three twenty-five plus eighty cents.
Okay, and then for single residents, it will go from three twenty-five to eight sixty-eight or five dollars and eighty... Ninety, five dollars and ninety, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, there's a... It would be great if we could just like have a total instead of us doing...
Understood.
Thank you.
Is there... Thank you, Chris. Is there any step plan? Meaning this, it's going to go from three twenty-five to eight seventy-eight a month? And what I'm asking is that if you do it every other week, of course, that would have to be a whole area probably that would have to be on that schedule, not just house by house.
Correct.
So my question is that if there's an area, the Wednesday area, for example, that decides that they want it every other week, is there some kind of step plan that might be between that, you know, like instead of... It might be like six dollars a month rather than eight seventy-eight or whatever that's going to be sixty-eight?
We didn't solicit bids that way. The curbside was solicited as, here's every household, here's the five zones. You got to pick up... You have to... You essentially run every street and every can you see, you pick it up. Once, you know, a week or every other week, that's the only way we've bid it. So I think what you're describing is not something we got pricing for.
Okay. And I ask that because not every... We recycle, okay? But not every time I put that recycling thing on the curb is there more than... Sometimes it's full up and sometimes there's two little bags of plastic bottles. So that's why I wanted to ask.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's... I think, you know, we projected an increase, maybe not to this extent, but that's part of why we tried to solicit the alternative bid, just for consideration of... Is there a consideration for reduced service for this? But I think if we had solicited it that way where it was basically optional for everybody to opt in, opt out of either one, all these prices would have been much higher because it's harder for them to business plan around that unknown.
So this cost increase is based on... I'm assuming it's based on the cost of fuel, the cost of equipment, and the cost of labor?
Yes, you nailed it.
Okay. And I know that... I know that the both have gone up and down and up and down. They're not just straightforward. So like, I guess my main question is those folks that... So, like, I guess my main question is those, those folks that are now doing recycling, and if they can't afford the eight sixty-eight, seventy, yeah, that anyway, if they can't afford it, what are they to do? Just, um, put their stuff in their neighbors?
It's in your, it's in your bill.
It's a community service.
Yeah, it's a community, everybody has to pay.
Okay, so, could you explain that too?
Sure, so...
Because I, I think a lot of people, including myself, I remember actually having to write out a check for recycling at one point, and now I don't do that anymore. Could you please explain that so that our public can look at YouTube later on and say, this is how we get our recycling done?
Sure, so, I mean, recycling, more or less has, you know, short-term franchise, more or less is what I would compare it to, where we've, the city of Urbana decided this is a community service that we wanted community-wide and to, to recognize an economy of scale for that. So there's other communities, Champaign does it where they don't have a community-wide recycling program. They require their licensed solid waste haulers to offer recycling service at a cost, whatever that may be, and people can opt in. Typically, what's happening with those are people are paying much higher than what we're paying because of the economy of scale of opting in eleven thousand, twelve thousand residents at once versus over there. If they have two thousand opted in, they still have to, it's still same, same fuel, same people, same trucks, but less people paying into it, so if you want the service, you end up paying a lot more for it.
And this is automatically attached to what?
Your UCSD bill? So the, the city has an IGA with UCSD to perform billing services for our sanitary sewer fee, our stormer utility fee, and our recycling tax.
Okay, so when you get your sanitary sewer bill, the, the, then, we can expect our sanitary sewer bill to go up at least eight bucks, those of us who are in single-family homes.
Five forty-three, but yeah, up to eight bucks on that line.
It depends on whether or not we do every mon, every week or every other week.
But if we do it every other week, it's eight dollars?
No.
It's five ninety.
Five ninety.
If you do it, if you maintain weekly service, which has been current here for decades, I assume, you'd be at eight sixty-eight? Rough numbers, you know, we would still work with finance more to fine tune these, but these are our estimates.
Okay.
So today, everybody in their sanitary sewer bill is getting charged three dollars and twenty-five dollars each month, which then goes to fund this program.
Correct.
And then it's three twenty-five a month on their sanitary bill.
I know, but you said three hun, three, three dollars and twenty-five cents.
Sorry, sorry. And then it would be eight sixty-eight to maintain the existing one, and it would be five ninety to go to the, twice a month, instead of the three dollars and twenty-five cents.
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Okay, so then my question becomes, if we, if, for example, my mother decides that she wants to do it every other week rather than, because that's more her thing, then rather than every week, then that our bill will only go up a couple of dollars and not...
This is a global decision you guys will help us make. Either everybody's going to go to week, maintain weekly, or everybody's going to go to every other week. It won't be individually opted in or out.
Oh, okay.
Everybody, whatever we decide here, everybody in, in the city of Urbana, if they have a bill, will see that. There's not going to be twice a week, or, sorry, twice a month, or once.
Okay, so then my other question becomes this. If, if we choose to make it every other week, for example, will there, like, right now, I know that the city is divided into areas where they pick up, you know, on what days they pick up the trash. You pick up the recycling the same day as you pick up the trash. My, my question is, will the, will the areas, because you said something about it being more expensive to do it every other week. Okay, my que, my question is, do we have to have, for example, my area is Wednesday, is when they pick it up. Another area will be Thursday. So my area, you pick it up on the first week and the third week. That area, they pick it up on this, that way, I don't see why it has to cost more. They will pick it up on the second week and the fourth week.
Yeah, I can't, I can't say for sure, but I suspect they would operate the same as they do now, where there'd be five days a week, one week on, one week off. So if your, if your stuff is picked up Wednesday currently, it'll probably still remain Wednesday, but it'll be every other Wednesday.
Yeah, I get that, what I'm saying though is that I live in a Wednesday day that they pick it up. Somebody else lives in a Thursday day. So what I'm saying is that instead of, like, on Wednesday, Wednesday your recycling will be picked up on the first week and the second week. On thir, uh, first week and the third week. On Thursday, your, your recycling will be picked up on the second and the fourth week. That way...
I don't think they'll do that from an operational standpoint, yeah, so...
It's being used every, still kind of every day.
I, I understand, but from an operational standpoint, for efficiencies for the contractor, so at one point, Rantool operated every other week, and I think that is going away, or has gone away, I'm not really sure. For an operator that has every other week service, they have to fill that other week for their truck and their people. And if Urbana and Rantool weren't on opposite weeks, they would have to find somewhere else, you know, small odd jobs, pickups, things for these other people, or they wouldn't have work on those weeks. So from a business management standpoint, they're going to probably say, first week and third week are going to be, second week and fourth week would be Rantool.
Okay. I didn't know we were competing with Rantool.
We're, we're not competing, it's just from an, an operational standpoint, and I can't speculate that. We just told them they have to pick it up, if we, if we opted that, we would say you got to pick up every other week. So, however they want it, means and methods is kind of where that's at, as long as they're meeting our performance standards for service, we wouldn't dictate, but I would speculate what it would be is, the days of those zones would all remain the same, and it would probably be every other week pickup.
Okay.
Alright, I'm sorry, we stuck on this slide, you can go forward now.
It's just a wrap-up here, so...
So, so last slide. These are our alternatives. We can maintain the current service, every week collection as we've had for decades. That's going to imply some higher costs with the curbside service within the current fiscal year, because we'd be starting that service in March, and we'd probably need a budget amendment to get to the end of the fiscal year. And we'd probably recommend adjusting the fee schedule. That would start new fee rate, tax rate, January one. Second option is we can go to every other week, curbside collection service. Same issue, we're still going to need a budget amendment within this fiscal year, and probably a fee adjustment. And there's some consequences to that as well. We had a, a week of no collection this year as the vendor had a truck problem. And I'll let Courtney say, say how that went in terms of...
I think, you know, every other week, there's a lot of folks that really participate in our recycling program, and it's, you know, very popular. Folks that really participate in our recycling program, and it's, you know, very popular in the community, in the community. So, that was kind of a, gave us kind of a lesson of how that would look, every other week collections. There was a lot of material generated every other week. So it took the driver an extra two to three hours to complete the route, each route day, to pick up that extra material. So we do have a lot of good recyclers in Urbana, which I'm proud of, but it is, it, it comes at a cost. I mean, the, the pickups will be a little slower and that's, I think they can get it done in a day, but it's just going to be a longer day for the driver. And, and there's going to be extra material sitting out that they may or may not be able to accept, depending on the contract terms. So, for example, right now, in our current contract, we take the U-Cart that people are familiar with, the, the totter on wheels, and we'll take up to one cubic yard in addition to that, which is pretty significant. We haven't gone through the contract details for the next contract, but that may change if it's every other week. They may not be able to accommodate all this material, it just kind of depends on what the contractor thinks they can, they can accomplish. But it will be kind of a longer day for them, and there'll be more, more materials set out, presumably.
So it's really a level of service distinction, and there's also this concern that, you know, every other week, we're going to end up with piles of cardboard next to cans regularly. Of course, you see that now, from time to time, somebody gets a TV delivered, but that may become a more frequent sight. Other alternatives that we haven't evaluated closely, you know, Tim mentioned, City of Champaign has multifamily recycling service, just like we do, but they're curbside recycling. They simply require licensed haulers to offer recycling at any price they may choose to set. We can, can look at insourcing recycling service to public works. We don't have figures on how, you know, how economically competitive that would be, or we can terminate the service. You know, certainly Courtney and I and Tim are, are advocating continuing recycling service, and we think there's some, some difficult consequences that we'd have to consider if we're going to every other week.
Just a couple logistical things to kind of tie onto this, so because of our agreement with UCSD to do the billing for us, typically they're making, the, the IGA is, once a year, they'll make adjustments for the calendar year. We have to notify them by December fifteenth, January first it would go into effect, so there's other financial mechanisms there that I think we can, we can look at more once Elizabeth's back, and look at some of those. We do have some fund balance where there's a potential that, could we chew down some of that fund balance for the interim and then do a fee adjustment later? But understanding that typically if we pass a new fee schedule with the next budget in July, that doesn't actually go into effect till next January, so we'd have to carry the entire year of twenty twenty-five of the excess cost if our fund balance could actually handle that. Other alternatives could be doing more like Charisa talked about, is do a step now and another step next year, step it in, but make sure that the first step is enough to cover service through twenty twenty-five. There's, there's a number of different ways, but one way or another, at some point, the, the cost is going to catch up to us. You know, I think the budget amendment is one thing, so the other big thing here is time sensitivity. So that December nineteenth date we shared with you is when their bids are good through. And currently, we would, probably in the budget amendment in November, depending which way we wanted to go, is we would try to include within that budget amendment a full, a pull from fund balance to cover services through the end of fiscal year at least, to make sure that when we sign that contract, we know we have budgeted funds within that program to pay for the service that we're signing up for, for this, for the remainder of this fiscal year.
Alright, so we have some alternatives, and we've talked a lot about the single family. I'm assuming the multifamily is going to stay every week because you didn't propose anything different?
Correct, yeah, and that one, the, the, the increase was much more nominal, and it's not, it's not quite the same structure either. Scott or Courtney can jump in here, I'll just let them talk.
Yeah, so, so multifamily isn't once a week. A particular apartment might have eight cans that are collected twice a week, and next door, there could be an apartment that's got six cans, collected three times a week. That's really constantly tuned by Courtney and the vendor, based on the generation that actually happens at those apartments.
So during turnover and move-out, they're collected more frequently?
Sometimes, we don't, we kind of add that in as an additional cost for those times of year, parts of the year. But typically, it just kind of depends on how things are generated, so how many units are in an apartment. For an example, Gregory Place Apartments, they have a lot of units and they have some commercial on the, in the bottom area, and so they generate a lot of material, so we, we pick up five times a week there, for example. And we just, there's just a lot of generation there. It just kind of depends on the property, and I, I kind of just have to assess it or work with the property management companies to determine what, what works best for them. Sometimes for space, space considerations, so we can only put in so many recycling receptacles, but we would have to increase the service levels to twice a week instead of once a week. So it kind of just, it's very, is a variable program with multifamily. And as we've, we've seen in the past few weeks, we, we need to kind of keep it consistently picked up at, at the minimum of once per week at our apartment complexes.
But even though there is this fluctuation in terms of pickup schedules and customization in terms of buildings, they still pay, they will be paying four dollars and five cents per unit if they're not dormitories, is that correct?
Correct, so they, they, there's a flat, it's a flat fee, so they're getting pretty good service overall, depending on where you're at, because it's just a flat fee, there's no additional cost, I get that question a lot. It doesn't matter how many recycled totters we provide them, or cardboard dumpsters, it's, it's just that flat fee per month.
And has this been communicated to the landowners, landlords, that they're going up?
This is the, this is our first public display of, of the outcomes of our bidding.
What's the plan to update those people?
So, there's a number of ways we can do that. There's this appearance, press release. We have contact information for some of those property managers, but not all of them. We provide the service and the billing goes out through UCSD. We don't, that doesn't imply that we have a phone number necessarily for, you know, a property manager. But Courtney does collect the, you know, the property manager names and phone numbers and emails as, as much as she can. And so we can do some communications that way as well.
Alright, I'm going to start with Grace, because I'm sure Grace has questions. Grace, the floor is yours if you have any questions.
Thanks, Mary Alice, how'd you know? I'd like to say that I, I want to highlight and appreciate that we've had such a low service for the past six years. I think that's an important piece here to keep in mind, kind of in the background context. Also want to stress that this is a really important service for the community and for our residents. I think that the best option is to reduce and avoid the disposal material in the first place, just while I have a little plug here, recycling does have a cost, and it's one of the last options and zero waste, just so when residents are thinking of things, recycling also has its cost and doesn't disappear. So best to avoid those things whenever possible. And, so my questions here, so I think that overall, to preface this, I think we need to balance maintaining recycling service, reducing the sudden increase cost to residents, and whenever possible, seeking new revenue that incentivizes sustainable practices. So I think that kind of two questions here is, one, have we considered other revenue impacts that would have kind of reduced or balanced, offset a little bit the impact of each household, such as a bag tax or other kinds of fees? And then second question, have we also, have we considered enhancing the services with that increased cost? If there's some way to have an economy of scale while they're picking up at those places? For example, pick up household compost or electronic waste? Is there any way to either increase service and/or seek other revenue options to offset these costs?
We haven't looked at any other revenue sources aside from the, the use cycle dedicated tax that funds all the use cycle activities. I, I'm just off the cuff, I'm, I'm trying to think of other additional services that we could bundle with this that would lower the marginal costs. We certainly can't add services to this and lower the, the dollar amount. You know, the, the, I think what you're describing, where you add more volume and get better pricing, that's really what we're looking at with the every week service. And that's why we pay a higher marginal price for every other week, it's just less volume, it's less bulk, it's less sales, volume, and throughput for the vendor. And so when we buy more, that is every single week service, we get a lower marginal cost, even though you spend more on an annual basis. But no, I haven't, I, I don't think we've considered other, other revenue sources beyond the, the dedicated tax.
Sandra, did you have any questions?
I'm just thinking of if we were to switch to this every other week pickup, and you had mentioned the number of, you know, items might be, number of items on the curb may grow if it's every other week. I, I guess I'm wondering, is there any place that people could just take their recycling to? Like if it piles up too much between those pickups? Like, like you said, they got a new TV and they just want the cardboard out of their house, or, you know, whatever. Is there a place... Is there a place to take it to in that sense?
Yes, this is Courtney. Yes, there is. We were, talked with a company called Illini Recycling. They're based in Champaign, and they are open to accepting recyclables from the entire community, including Urbana. They have a drop-off facility located in Champaign, so people would have to drive the material over to Champaign to drop off at their facility. But they do have dedicated dumpsters for things like cardboard, aluminum, plastic materials that people would have to source, separate and place into those respective bins. But there is a place, and that's the only place I should mention, in the Champaign-Urbana area that will take recycling from the public as a drop-off. And it's a free, a free, free drop-off.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, questions in council chambers? Chea?
You mentioned, was it 2011, the last contract? Would it be possible to see what the increase would be from those rates? Because you said they were higher than our most recent contracts. I think that might be helpful, you know, as Grace brought up, we've had this period of time, extended period of time with unusually low rates. Might make it a little bit more digestible if we're kind of comparing to something that it's not exactly the same, but at least have a sense of, you know, if this had been happening incrementally instead of going down and back up, kind of where we might be. I think in terms of those costs, it also might be helpful if we could have a sense for, you know, what is someone in Champaign paying if they are doing this through, you know, a company, right? Especially, I mean, not to go too far down that road of, you know, if we were just going to require a license, because I'm not, I'm not necessarily proposing that. But again, if, I know we're all just going to get a million questions, and I feel for you, Courtney especially, I'm sure you're going to be fielding a lot of those of whatever increase goes into effect. And so being able to have information to say, yes, it's an increase, but here's what, why and what it could have been, I think could be helpful for folks. So those are a couple pieces of information I at least would find helpful. I will say personally, I think sticking with every week is a worthwhile city value. I really worry that if we switch to every other week, people are just going to throw stuff out. I think it's great that there's somewhere in the community that's willing to take additional recyclable materials, but who's doing that, right? Like, you know, we all have those weeks where, you know, the bin is piled super high and you're just trying to punch it down. I can say for myself, I'm not like, where can I take this week? I'm like, can I get away with sticking this in next week, right? And if you don't have that option, I think more people are just going to say, I don't have time for this, I'm just going to throw it away. And we pride ourselves on taking the effort to try to be as green as we can be. And so I, even though this is a tough, tough pill to swallow, I will say in terms of just general feedback, I think sticking with every week is worthwhile from my perspective.
All right, other questions, comment? This is discussion, so there's no final action here. I will say from my perspective, I understand what Jay is saying. I was actually thinking something very similar, that if you run out of room, you're going to end, it's going to end up in the landfill. I completely get that. I, but I also think that this is a pretty heavy pill to swallow for people. So I actually like the twice a month instead of every week. Just thinking about the diversity and the pressures that we have in our community in terms of everything that's been going up. It's still going up. I don't think we, we're not going to get away from it not going up unless we completely abandon the entire program, which I am not in favor of. I'm not in favor of us insourcing it or terminating the service. And it's sort of, I mean, the haulers, it's a good alternative. It would give people the ability to say how many times per month that they want to have recycling, but I do really like the fact that we have a citywide program. So from my perspective, I think the twice a month is the direction to go. Now it's 50/50. So what other information do you need from us?
You know, I guess one, in one way, shape or form, we're going to be back in November to either talk about it more or bring something for action for you folks. If any of you have additional thoughts or input you want to share with us between now and next month, please let us know. You know, we can, we can work at communicating this type of stuff out. Some of it, you know, we're not communicating until we know definitively where this group wants to go with it either, because we don't want to, there, you know, that all the options are on the table currently, you know, in some way, shape or form. Depending on what your guys' thoughts are in the public and things like that will kind of gear us where we need to go. But there is some, like I said, there's some time sensitivity to it if we want to get, award the bid that we do have currently, you know, and there's, there's a time clock on that. You know, dealing with UCSD, I did talk to them as far as their January 1st stuff. They indicated for something like this, they may be able to make an exception for that so that if we wanted to do a budget amendment to get us clear through the budget cycle and do a intermittent, intermittent fee adjustment, they may be able to accommodate that outside of the January 1 to January 1 timeframe, so.
Before you leave, two things. The first one is, can you confirm that the city does not make money off of the U-cycle program?
The city does not make money off of the U-cycle program.
Okay, I just want to, I want everybody to understand that this is not going in the city coffers. It seems to me like in addition to that, we actually subsidize it because we have staff working on it, which you're not. Correct me if I'm wrong, if you're paid off of the U-cycle fund or not.
U-cycle covers that as well.
Okay, all right. So the staffing is covered.
Correct. It's treated more or less as like an enterprise-type fund where the fee for service pays for service and support staff and promotional information and contract services. The idea is that we want it to be self-sufficient.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I'm sure there'll be lots of conversation.
Understood.
All right, Will, you're up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're here today to continue council's ARPA discussion, how to reobligate or obligate our remaining funds before the end of the year. So I just have a couple of quick slides from some of the discussion last week, and then that'll kind of be ready for open discussion as well. So come, there were some questions last week about what does the city need to do to officially obligate these funds by the end of the year? So there's two different mechanisms that we can obligate funds. The first is by having a signed contract or in our financial system that's reflecting a purchase order. And the second way is an inter-agency agreement between departments and agencies within a recipient's government. And you'll see the requirements of what that has to meet in the little screenshot below there, which is relatively straightforward. You have one item from the first column, column A, just imposes conditions by, about the use of funds. And then one, or all the requirements from column B, which the top one is, I think the main one, which talks about a scope of work or project deliverables. And the other two just really, I think, kind of say that you can't use weasel words to kind of get out of what the agreement says. So it's a relatively simple and straightforward way we can have an inter-agency agreement between different departments within the city. There was a question about previous expenses. So ARPA guidelines are that funds can be used for expenses incurred after March 3rd, 2021, for ARPA-eligible uses. And then if you remember, there was the first set of rules that we operated under, and then they updated the rules. If there's something that only became eligible in the updated rules, the expenses can only go back that far to when the updated rules came out. There's also a question about supplementing funds and what our restrictions regarding that were. So the ARPA rules are that the supplement and not supplant requirements explicitly applied to surface transportation and Title I eligible uses, which is federal grants, CDBG. And then I quoted the FAQ here so everybody could, you know, see with very clarity, is that the rules say that, or the FAQ about the rules say that requirement does not apply to the emergency relief from natural disasters, public health and negative economic impacts, premium pay and so on. Those are the original ARPA categories. So if it's in the original ARPA categories, the supplement, not supplant requirement does not apply, and they're pretty straightforward in how they address that question. So what does that mean for the city of Urbana? We could obligate the funds that we have to previous year's expense, going back to that March date in 2021, provided that they were ARPA-eligible expenses. Or we could obligate those funds to future expenses, presumably as long as they're spent by December 31st of 2026. And then they have to be ARPA-eligible expenses naturally, and we would need to have an inter-agency agreement or a contract, which we have for all of our existing projects by that December deadline of this year. So what happens after the end of this year? If a project fails to spend all of its award, funds can be reclassified, which means kind of reobligated, for an ARPA-eligible expense and for a project that is obligated prior to December 31st of 2024, which can either be a contract or an inter-agency agreement. And then we have a second update to give to you today. So talking with Public Works after the discussion a little bit yesterday of if there were any projects that might not spend all their funds, and talking with one of our internal projects based off the participation rates and the number of eligible properties, there's potentially $300,000 left in our sanitary sewer lateral project that we might not spend. And there's a couple of different options on how the city could spend those funds. So the first option is we could amend the project, kind of how we've amended other, in a similar fashion that we've amended other ARPA projects, to just include a larger geography or a second neighborhood. It's kind of the first option, kind of following the same project scope, just making the geography bigger. The second option would be to amend the project to reduce the award and then to essentially, so the second option is to, instead of having a project, transition and making it a program. So there's a couple of steps that we would need to do to make that happen. We would have to spend those funds by 2026, so we could pay for a sewer, otherwise eligible sewer expense, and that cost savings could help fund a future program that would extend past 2026. That's an idea, there's not a specific program necessarily in place, although Tim, I talked about what that could be. And then the third option that there is, is to amend the project award to reduce the amount and then add those funds to the overall total that needs to be obligated by the end of year, however council so chooses. And that would bring the total to 605,000 total. And so that's the updates that I have. I sent a spreadsheet out as well, including the amount spent to council members for each project to date, and these are just the prompts that we ended on last week. That's all I have.
All right, Chris?
Can you go back to that? Yeah, this option two, does that expand the geography then? We would, citywide for lateral lining or what?
Yeah, it would theoretically be citywide. So talking to Tim, how this could work is we have a lateral lining program for city infrastructure assets, and while we do that, we would have some sort of program to offer the residents who have a lateral coming into that in the area that we're lining. So that would be citywide as we do projects throughout the city instead of just focusing on one neighborhood.
Grace?
Yeah, my question regarding the, the update for me at least on the sewer laterals for Ellis subdivision, and so they're saying that they have 300,000 more than they'll need to complete the, the entire project?
Yeah, briefly. The project award was for, you know, a certain amount of homes and lateral linings, and then based off the participating homes and of those participating homes, the ones that are eligible with the expected cost.
What does it mean? One home eligible and one home not eligible? I need to understand that.
I don't know off the top of my head. I can get that information for you.
Okay, I'd like to know that. What makes one eligible and one not eligible? Is it that somebody didn't sign a release form? Is it somebody, is it, we haven't gotten, I haven't, I haven't seen any release forms in my mailbox, so I need to understand what exactly that is. And the other thing is, I know that we were the pilot program for that, so I guess my question is, is that, and I know that at least a third of the city has the same design as ours, and so if, I would like to see that if, if there are extra funds left over, that it'd be, that this program be extended to another neighborhood with the same issues. And that's about what I have to say.
We'll start with Chandra. Do you have any questions or discussion?
No, nothing at this time. Thank you.
Grace?
Thank you. Yes, I would state that as far as the sanitary sewer lining, I would support options one and/or two rather than taking the funds already. I think it's important to give people some time to see it in action. I think that word of mouth is also really powerful. It sounds like we've gotten actually a really high percentage of people enrolled in the area, and I think that when people see it happening, I think that there would be a lot more joining who might be later adopters. So I think it's important to keep that money and see if we can use it for the same kinds of purposes, whether it's a permanent program later on or expanding the area, since that's important to keep there. I think Charisse already answered the question, if you could just confirm, or she asked the question, if you could just confirm about that 300,000 extra is based on projections of who's already anticipated to participate. Is that right?
Yeah, the 300,000 is a conservative projection. There could be a little bit more, but we don't want to overestimate and then have to reallocate back to the project, so. But it is projection-based.
Okay. And then my other question here, I think it's important to clarify for the public and a question I've gotten from some participants who may have even been receiving some ARPA funding with concerns that we would be pulling their funding because it isn't spent by the end of 2024 when they actually have till the end of 2026 to spend it. So I didn't know if you could just please state like very clearly, my understanding is that we are not pulling funding from any of the approved projects, except maybe this one that we're considering and one that had failed, but that the projects have until the end of 2026 calendar year to spend their funding. And so we are not planning on pulling any funding at this point from approved projects. And I don't know if you could please clearly confirm that.
Yeah, are you talking about all of the 25 ARPA projects?
Yes, yes. So all the other projects besides the one that failed and this one that we're talking about, all the others, we're not planning on reducing any of their funding at this point. Is that right?
That is correct.
I would say there's one caveat there. They have signed contracts, right, with the, with the city? And so therefore, we are obligated as long as they meet the parameters of eligible expenses.
Yeah, so I think the city has no plans to preemptively reduce any awardees, scope of work or contract or terms. They always have to comply with eligible expenses and so on and so forth. But no, we have no plans to take funds from anybody who continues to provide services. The only time we would ever consider that is the third or fourth quarter of 2026 when time is, you know, running short and maybe somebody is unable to spend it by the appropriate amount of time. But no, we have no plans to take mon, funds away from any project.
So just thinking through some of our options here, you know, we have a couple of big projects that we've been working on with ARPA with the city. So we have the roof, like repairs for seniors, and we have this one, so that equates to like 1.5 million roughly, speaking, that we've basically obligated already. The remaining piece
I would say the way to assign it to other city use would either, it could be a use that we have already under contract, that's ARPA-eligible. So I believe, I talked to RPC a little bit about this, and our equal program would be eligible. Or we could have an inter-agency agreement that spells out what the goal of the funds is and any restrictions on the funds, and that could effectively create a program then. But it doesn't have to be fully defined in every little detail at that point in time.
But we could, if the council agrees, roll this into the social service grant process.
Correct. We would have an internal agency agreement that states that. We might have to provide a little bit more detail than just saying, go to social service grants.
No, we would have goals for the social services, et cetera.
But we should be able to do that.
Right. From my standpoint, so I don't have to turn over the chair because it's just discussion. Right? All right. From my standpoint, I like that process better because there is a process, right? And so people can then, if, for example, if a place decides, oh, you know, if we could expand this, we're gonna apply for this, so we could have that as a category in the social service grant funding. I think that's kind of the most fair way to move forward, in my opinion. All right. Anybody else like to discuss? No, Shereen? Will, what other, oh, Chris?
Well, just a quick question. Shereen, can you think of another neighborhood that would need the lateral treatment?
Well, the thing, I don't have the map in my head, because there was, there was actually a map that I had that showed the same kind of design, because you guys gave it to me. I guess the main question I have is, because it seems like we've only gotten through the televising of the sewer lines, so I don't know how. And Tim, Tim can call me later on. Tim, you hear that? He can call me later on to tell me, explain to me how we've already determined that there's $300,000 when we haven't gotten past the review of the televising and we've done some repair, I know for some lines, but we haven't even gotten to the lining of the line. So I would like to know how that calculation came, that we don't have, that we have this surplus of funds, because I was worried, to be honest, that we wouldn't have enough. And if we have these surplus of funds, I'd like to know how that came about. And like I said, what qualifies or what has qualified or not qualified people's sewer lines that have, the folks that have signed up? If that's the case, I mean, if they didn't, there were plenty of people that did not sign, so maybe that was the reason. But I'd like to know for sure that that's what it was, because we haven't gotten that far. It's a process that's taking place. We haven't gotten that far in the process to actually, to me, to be able to make that kind of decision about the funding yet. But I'm not in the room where it happens, so at least this time. So.
Chris, did you have something?
Yeah. One more quick question. Will, can we, the last four bullet points here, questions you have, can we be obviously emailing you our thoughts and answers as we go along here?
Yeah.
I would think, yeah.
And if I find those maps, I'll let you know what other neighborhoods, because I think it's something, I think it's like all around in a particular area. Can't remember for sure.
All right. Do you need anything else from us, Will?
So, you know, I'm hearing a general appreciation for the social service funding idea for that first $305,000, which we can move towards, you know, writing an inter-agency agreement for that. That'll probably have a discussion later this fall or before the end of the year at least about social service funding and some program goals. And, you know, it's a lot more money from previous years, so we have to figure out exactly what scope we want for those, especially with the increase of the ARPA fund. So that'll be a continuing discussion on that. And then the other discussion, which we can have a continuing ARPA discussion, is the sanitary project and how we want to approach that one. You know, we are a little bit time-bound on what we want to do, but I think if it's, it's probably more relevant if we were to choose option three. That would have a larger impact on the social service funding program goals to add an additional $300,000 on that. If it's just creating a program, you know, by way of funding a different project, I think that one's a little bit more straightforward if we choose that.
So, I mean, there's a couple of things that could happen with the sanitary sewer project. One, it could not work, right? It could potentially, I mean, there's always a risk that it's not gonna do what we intended to do. And, or, you know, we could be left over with money, you know, granted, construction costs are up. So if it doesn't work, or if we're left over with money and it doesn't work, those paired together means that we're not gonna be throwing another 300,000 to a program that's not working. My question to you is, if we go that route, where we say, okay, expand the geography, let's designate the 300,000 for that, and the program fails, can we then, towards the end, take the equal projects and then apply it, even though we obligated it to the sewer one? Because if something fails, we don't have to fund it, right? Can we then go backtrack and go to the equal projects? That would be...
Yeah. I believe the, if, the ones that have been entered into a contract.
Completed, within the timeframe.
And are ARPA-eligible expense, yes.
Okay. Okay. Chandra and Grace, do you guys have, I'm sorry, yes, Chandra and Grace, do you guys have anything last to say?
I'd be in favor of funding more equal projects as well as putting more money into the social services grants, especially ones that we can gear more toward adults, because we have, we've done a lot of the youth services grants, so more in the way for adults.
Okay. All right. We are gonna move on. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right. Council input and communication. We'll start in the chambers. We'll start in the chambers. Okay. Grace?
A lot of people know that I was in Rochester, Minnesota for a while because of my brother's illness. And what I want to say is this, while up there, I met a lot of people. One was a student from University of Illinois. And we were on the shuttle going to Mayo one day, and he loved Urbana. He loved Urbana. He was in a wheelchair. He was not capable of moving. But this is what he said. Urbana has the best ADA, sidewalks, streets, MTD, anything, everything that helps disabled. And he, you know, he had on his Fighting the Line t-shirt, which is why I kind of called him out and like, ah, I'm from Urbana. But he's like, I love Urbana. I love Urbana. Because, he said, I've never been in another city that has had, that does so much to enable or help disabled people. So I wanted to share that with you last week, and totally, you know, it totally went out of my mind. But our work does not go unnoticed, even by, you know, this one person, and if it's one, I'm sure there's 101 and 1,001 people who make notice of those types of accommodations that we make to help everyone. So I wanted to add, I wanted to say that so that our Public Works people don't get discouraged, our people on City Council don't get discouraged. This does not go unnoticed.
All right. Grace, do you have comment tonight?
No, thank you.
Chandra, do you have comment tonight?
No.
All right. Chris, will you take the chair for a moment?
Take the chair and recognize Mary Alice.
Yeah. I wanted to speak a little bit towards something that I've noticed ever since school started, which is the proliferation of electric scooters and electric skateboards is a little out of control. It's, I see electric skateboarders on Lincoln, like literally flying down. I see people almost, you know, crashing on sidewalks with all their, like, it's pretty wild right now. And I don't think it's for the traffic commission, other than they're literally in the street. I mean, I see motorcycle helmets with electric skateboarders going like, it seems like they're going 20 miles an hour, but it's probably too fast for a skateboard, or if it should be in the bicycle pedestrian. But I do think that this is gonna continue. It's gonna continue to be an issue, and it's something that we should really start thinking about. My hope is that these electric devices of some kind would use the bicycle lanes when a bicycle lane is there, but I'll tell you right now, that is not the case. They are not doing that. They are going all over the place. So I just wanted to say that publicly, that I think that we should be looking into appropriate ways to direct people with those types of devices to travel. All right. I will relinquish the chair.
I'll give the chair back to Mary Alice. I have a comment. Just to piggyback what you said, the blue e-bikes have become quite the litter around town, and I'm glad to see they're getting used, but they're every, they're getting left everywhere, and it just seems the problem is the bikes are not picked up fast enough. To be fair, they are eventually picked up and removed, but I don't know, they're just, it just seems to be everywhere, and that's one other element to that situation.
All right. Thank you. With no further business in front of this committee, this meeting is adjourned.